All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Straight up nine o'clock, February 10th, 2020. Please stand with me and we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for a new day and thank you for a chance to gather and make decisions on behalf of the county, to listen to our constituents, to share information, but ultimately to make decisions that are in the best interest of this county. We just pray for our first responders. We have a bunch of them here today. We ask for their daily protection. We pray for our servicemen and women serving all over this globe. Be with them and protect them, ultimately bring them back home. We turn this agenda over to you, Father, and ask for wisdom to deal with each and every one. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Obviously, a variety of subjects here to talk about today. Didn't know it would be so popular. First item, public comments, requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with our Texas Open Meetings Act. I've got a couple of folks that have completed a request to speak. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? For the items on the agenda that are action items, we will allow comment and question. For the items that are not action items, this won't be a town hall meeting. We're here to listen to the presenters, and I will ask that you all do the same. We will move on to the first public participation form in the order I received them. Mr. Craig Easley. Craig, come on up to the mic if you would.
Mine is actually on the agenda and you're going to speak now.
Yours is on the agenda. Marvin Nichols is not on our agenda.
Okay, well, can I even come up there?
Sure, sure.
(inaudible) will speak first. On the agenda, Mr. Hollingsworth is going to speak to us about...
Here, pull that mic as close as you can. We've got folks that'll watch this.
Giving some taxpayer money to some sort of support or not support to Marvin Nichols' reservoir. And for me, it's personal, everyone in the room here is personal. Many generations of our families, family-owned land. The facts are Dallas doesn't need the water. The facts are they have plentiful water. The facts are that they hired an engineering firm to do the calculations for them, 2014, published. And their recommendation to Dallas was they needed no more surface water for the next 50 to 60 years and beyond. Documented, engineering firm. I'm not an engineer. I am educated. I know most of the people in this room. Math is just numbers. We can all do it for ourselves. You take the surface area of the lake, calculate the gallons in the lake. 50-year plan for Dallas, 5.2 million people, calculated 150 gallons per day, and that's high. Give them 150 gallons a day. 50 years, five of their lakes that are deemed for Dallas, use five, not six, Lake Palestine out of, use five lakes, and there's still over 50% of the water in those lakes. It's math. You can do it. We can all do it. I asked the court not to give money other than to buy the lake. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure about requesting money. I don't have any agenda items on here that are requesting money, but maybe I'll figure out what you're talking about when Mr. Hollingsworth talks. Alfred Flanagan?
Mr. Chairman, may I don't need to be here. Your Google address took me to a sales barn, Sheriff's Policy out on Green Hill Road.
Tell me who you're looking for.
My, I'm looking at the Commissioners' Court meeting. I just wanted to make a one-minute statement on public safety.
This is Commissioners' Court meeting, and you may do that right after this gentleman here, okay?
I don't mind if he goes ahead. Well, I'm going to have a lot of friends in this room, and maybe when I get through, I may not, I don't know. I hope I do. We all may have a difference of opinion on the matter. Mine is a statement on the Marvin Nichols reservoir. And I'm not here advocating for it. I'm not here advocating against it one way or the other. I will say that I'll, sure, I'll be dead and gone by the time anything would ever be done on a future lake. I was probably looking around the room here, probably a little closer to the purchase of the land at Bob Sandlin when Bob Sandlin Lake was built. I know my father represented some people that didn't want their land sold on the lake. Under eminent domain, that doesn't become a choice whether you do or you don't sell. I think most everyone feels like I do. They don't like their land taken. They want to determine when they sell their land and for how much. The negotiations back at that time were based on whether they were getting a fair value for the land. Progress comes in a lot of different ways, and I'm sure this morning when we got up and turned our lights on, we didn't think about someone not wanting the power line to go across their property at some point in time in the past. When we came down the highways, we didn't think about, at that time, someone did not want the land, the highways going across their property. But under the eminent domain law, they do have that opportunity, and sometimes it ends up taking from a few and for the good of many, and that's true with most everything. Out here on the loop, there were many people who didn't want the loop to go in because it split their property. And if I had been one of those people, just like Greg and many others out here, I'd probably feel the same way. I want to sell on my time schedule and not somebody else's. Without Bob Sandlin Lake, though, we wouldn't be here today, probably. Texas Utilities probably wouldn't have been here. The College may not have been here. Many of our industries wouldn't be here. It's a fact that we have to live with. My concern is that, and maybe my information is old, but I understood that whatever county Marvin Nichols reservoir took land from or in the basin would receive a certain amount of acres of water for the future at the expense of someone else. Government tells us that representatives are based on population, and I would venture to say that right now the metroplexes, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Austin, probably have more representatives in Austin than what the rural America, rural Texas has. And when they're ready for the water, those people are going to vote with one another to get the water one way or the other, whether we help pay for the lake then or whether they pay for the lake and we get part of the water from it in the future. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not sure that staying in the negotiation with the other water districts might not be the best thing to do. The thing that is really wrong is the eminent, the mitigation land. There's no way, of course, I understand that's law, but it looks like we ought to be working with the other water districts to try and get the mitigation land law changed to where you don't have to buy two or three acres of land to offset one acre of water. That eats up land real fast. But do we stay in, working with the other water districts to try and stay ahead of the suburban growth for our voting rights? I don't know, but at some point in time, I think we're kidding ourselves to think that they are not going to get the water through Austin at the time that it becomes crucial for them, whether it's 10 years down the road or 50 years down the road.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is William Crowder. I live in Dallas. I'm a petroleum geologist. I've worked for 40 years. And my whole concern with the Marvin Nichols Lake is it's going to be built on the biggest fault in northeast Texas. I won't bore you with it. I can talk to people later, but the fault is right, the lake, the dam's right on top of it. If you get home tonight and on your Google, type in man-made earthquakes and dams, and you'll see hundreds of examples of where we built a dam on a fault and it causes earthquakes. I requested through a Freedom of Information Act, the engineering work and the geological studies from the Sulfur River Basin Authority, they wrote me back and told me those, I'm sorry, they wrote me back and told me those studies were not open for public record. These are studies paid for by the public. The SRBA has those data, and they tell me that is not something that's exempt from disclosure. So here's the problem, this is my whole problem. The biggest dam in northeast Texas, there have been studies that we've paid for, and the people that are responsible for any liability is the Sulfur River Basin Authority, and they will not release the data. Here's what's really sweet, they have all the liability. I wrote the lawyer for the Texas Water Development Board, is Joe Reynolds. He said the sponsoring entity has all the liability. Sulfur River Basin has no assets. They have the data and will not give it to us. Don't you see a problem? Do you ever have a problem where you smell something, then you realize it's rotten? Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. May I please give this to you?
Could I get you to fill out one of the public participation forms over there?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
We appreciate your passion. I want you to understand this is Titus County Commissioners' Court, and at this point, we have absolutely nothing to do with this.
I understand, sir. My point is it was different when the lakes were built 50 years ago, people weren't connected like they are now. The words I said today will be in the newspaper here in the next month, and I'm also writing it Archibald Texas Monthly, and I have a petition signed by 35 geologists saying, "What are you doing building this on top of the fault?" To the governor saying, "Take it off the lower lane's plan." I will have a thousand signatures.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Will you fill out that item there for us?
Yes, sir.
All right, who's next? Sir?
Well, I'm Gary Cheatwood. I'm not from Titus County, but I've got land right across the river over here in Red River County. And they want to build a lake on us over there, and we're not happy about it. And it's going to take, it's going to take our past and our present and a future away from us. We're talking about hundreds of people and thousands of jobs in the timber industry. It's going to do away with southern Red River County. It's going to affect our school system. It's going to take 40% of River Crest land and part of it's over in Titus County. It's going to be gone. And we're concerned about it, and we're not happy about it. And we've, and I think there's a bunch of people, uninformed people, some of them are locally, and some greedy people in Dallas that want to take this water that we think to make money off of. And we know they have other sources. Toledo Bend's got 2 million acre feet down there for sale and need to run a pipeline to it. I think it would, myself, I think it'd be cheaper than trying to build Marvin Nichols' reservoir. And they won't give us all the facts, and they won't give us any mitigation coverage, and it might take, I mean, according to Texas Fish and Wildlife, it might take from 163,000 to 600,000 acres of land for mitigation. And they recommend to go somewhere else to get you water. And we know they've got other places to go. I thank you. And also, I'm with the SRBA too, Sulfur River Basin Authority, but I don't represent them here today. Just representing myself and some of these people right back here. Thank you all.
Thank you. Would you also do the same and fill out one of the public participation forms? It's right on that table behind you, just so we have a record of you and I can put it in the minutes?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's invite anyone else. Moving on, item number two. Thank you for everyone's comments. Consider and possibly approve minutes from our last meeting, January 27. Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item number three, a report from Commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start on my left, Commissioner Parker.
We've been doing some patching and with rain and all, we've been having, we've had plenty of, plenty of that to do. We've hauled three different days over, often at the end of 1993, hauling route that the state has given us. And it has got so wet over there till we're having trouble getting in and out of there now. So I talked to Carl at it, Tech Dot, this morning, and asked him if we could move to the pile that at 259 at White Oak Creek down there, and he said, "Sure, get whatever you need to get down there." So the guys will be doing that this week while we're gone to school. They'll be hauling route most of the week, probably, that and trying to get some signs put up. We've got some signs made that we've got to replace that have either been destroyed or moved or stolen or whatever. So they're, they're in the process of getting, getting all that fixed up.
All right.
We've been cleaning up a lot of debris and stuff. We've been trying to get these soft spots, taking care of it. We can do some seal coating coming up this spring and just trying to, we put a lot of culverts in. In fact, we put four culverts in and just trying to, you know, the weather's got us locked on the patching and stuff, and I know we've got a lot of roads that need patching and just need to bear with us on that till we get some dry weather. And also, I don't know who's doing it, and I want to make it public that we've had, there was about six mailboxes knocked down in my precinct over the weekend, about five of them together. And I hope whoever's doing it realized that we had a lot of elderly people that couldn't do this, and that we had to have somebody put these mailboxes up for them. And they just, I'm just hoping they're caught, I hope they know it's a federal offense for doing this.
All right, we did a major cleanup on a bridge over Ripley Creek on County Road 1220, and we hauled off all the silt and dirt cleaned out from under the bridge. And we did a lot of patching on, we did 4550, 1140, 2300, 1070, and 1030. And we patched on 2730 on a cul-de-sac around a bunch of mailboxes. And we removed some trees out on 2300 and cut a few trees down and stayed pretty busy. That's it.
We've been staying very busy by cleaning out ditches and patching what we could and kept us busy.
All right, thank you all. Item number three is a presentation by Chief Jerry Clark regarding life and accident insurance policy for Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department, possible action to follow. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry.
I'd like you to know that I brought in a little ray of brightness here. Brighten up the room for today. I'm not here today to ask for money. I'm not here today to ask for a vote. What I am here today is to present you some information and something to think about for future use. I understand this is a budget year, and we're in the middle of the year, so it's kind of hard to try to get you to approve funding at this point in time. But the reason I'm here today is accident and sickness health policy for our volunteer firefighters. It came to light when Randy Carroll approached me one day, and they had a firefighter die years ago, and they had nothing to offer the spouse, other than the fact that Telco thought ahead and they put a $10,000 life insurance policy on each of their firefighters. Since that time, we have organizations that have popped up, State Fire Marshals Association. If you're a member of them, you can get a $10,000 life insurance policy, $20,000 accidental death. And there's other organizations out there that do the same. But what we're here today is just to ask you to take into consideration towards the accident and sickness policy for our firefighters. If you look to the second page of the pamphlet I gave you, 58,250 firefighters were injured in 2018. The figures are still being tabulated for 2019, but it will show an increase. In addition to the injuries, 6,175 documented exposures to infection, disease, and 47,150 exposures to hazardous conditions. All these are affecting the life of our firefighters. 14,425 were injured due to collision involved in fire department emergencies responding to or returning from an incident. The remaining were firefighters that were injured on the actual scene itself. In 2018, 64 firefighters across the United States died due to fire. From 1990 to 2017, we lost 485 firefighters due to brush fires, grass fires, and wildland firefighting. That's an average of 17 deaths a year. And in 2020, so far in this month of January, we have lost nine firefighters. Again, what we have found in our research to see what we can do to protect our firefighters is very little in compared to a paid firefighter. A paid firefighter through their organizations can get $500,000 to the family in the case of a death. The most we've been able to come up with is if you're a member of SFFFMA, State Fire Marshals Association, your dues are $50 a month or a year per firefighter. You do have a 10,000 accidental death and disbursement, dismemberment, and a 20,000 on-duty accidental death policy. If you happen to be a member of the National Volunteer Firefighters Council, the dues for those folks are $18 a year per firefighter, and they offer the same 10,000, 20,000 accidental. Payment options is what I would like to discuss with the Commissioners' Court. What we have found is there are grants out there that will help us do this. Marvin Vincent is the VFIS rep for our area, and he's going to present now the policy that we have found that will take care of the major portion of the injuries and sicknesses and accidental deaths of our firefighters. At the end of Marvin's presentation, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to come up and answer them. Marvin?
Thank you, Marvin. Thank you, sir.
I'm Marvin Vincent with VFIS of Texas, and ideally, as Jerry mentioned, we're in a dangerous business, that's for sure. So injuries and deaths continue to occur. We've tried our best to prevent these things. We've slowed it down some, but it seems to just keep coming back. So what VFIS does, first of all, as y'all are aware, we insure your assets, your trucks, buildings, et cetera, already. So the good news is your departments have work comp. So what we consider work comp to be is unlimited medical. It's designed to take care of injuries. It does not have a death benefit. It has a burial benefit, but not a death benefit. So VFIS, many years ago, came up with what we call the Accident and Sickness Program that can be primary, but in your case, it would be excess of work comp, which is better because you've got the unlimited medical, and then over and above it, excuse me, you have additional medical for the things that work comp may not pay for. And unfortunately, in the fire business, the most prominent of those is coronary issues, heart issues. Typically, work comp does not cover those. So this policy provides additional medical, once work comp denies, to pick up in case there's something denied. Now, it also has an accidental death and dismemberment number, and there are two different quotes there. One has 50,000, the other one has 100,000. Both of those also have what we call off-duty accidental death. Those are both at 50,000 because that's the maximum the company will write at this time. The off-duty event would be an example, a firefighter, and many of them do, they volunteer, but they have to work somewhere to make a living. So they could be on their own job making that living and have an accidental death, and this policy would pay. This coverage extends to and from the event as far as the line of duty coverage goes. So if they're traveling in their personal vehicle to the scene or to the station or back to wherever they came from, the coverage is extended. Now, you'll see a lot of options there. Seatbelt. We're still killing ourselves and our apparatus. Big trucks especially, the water tenders, they seem, they seem to roll more often. So if the firefighter's wearing the seatbelt, additional money's paid. Safety vest. We're out there on the highway and traffic, so if there's a person struck, they've got the vest on, the additional money's paid. So it's all about safety. It's a military death benefit. If they're previous military, they're volunteering firefighting, and they lose their life, benefit's paid. Excuse me, I won't go through every one of these, but you can see on and on, there is a memorial, the memorial benefit. That goes to the fire department, and they do anything they want to with it if they lose a firefighter. Below that, the lump sum living benefits are determined by a physician, usually making a determination of percentage of disability or whatever. Weekly income benefits supplement work comp because if you're injured bad enough that you can't do your normal job, work comp does pay weekly benefits. These work with work comp to put the person back closer to where they normally would be on their livelihood. Typically, work comp's going to pay about 70%. So there's a void there. This works to pick up the difference. Again, down at the bottom, I mentioned the medical expense. It's about two-thirds of the way down. There's $50,000 that becomes available if work comp denies, for whatever reason, the You have an extended total disability... You have an extended total disability benefit included. What that's referring to is the fact that if the disability continues on, it could be extended up to 10 years. Then they look at it again and possibly extend it another 10 years, depending on the situation. And again, you're probably still working with work comp at this time. So this policy basically wraps around work comp to pick up the pieces and make the differences. Plus, if they lose their life, you have a death benefit for the survivors. I've gone over quite a bit of it real quick, but I would just say, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Other than that, this is a county-wide policy that first sheet shows you the departments that are included. By doing it this way, the savings is roughly 25%. In fact, and I figured the notes on two of the departments that already have the policies, this particular instance is closer to 50% savings by doing it, grouping everybody together. So you're covering everybody, you're getting a discount, and the best news of all, if you'll notice at the back, the premiums are broken out per department. They can use the Hasfield 3667 to apply for work comp and the premiums for this policy on a reimbursement based on $175 per volunteer. And every department in the county should be, Jerry, are they eligible, correct? 14 of them? So I know I've covered a lot, gentlemen, but if you have any questions, be glad to answer them. If not, well, you've got copies to look at.
What's the difference in these last two pages here?
That's showing the premium breakout between the two quotes.
One based on the 50, one based on the 100.
One based on the 100, yes, sir.
Not both of these combined?
No, no, exactly. It's breaking it out. Side by side, if you'll notice, the bottom line is the actual total cost for the 50 and then the 100. Yes, sir.
Does this just include volunteer firemen? Just volunteer? As opposed to what?
As opposed to regular firemen, full-time firemen.
This right here is...
This is for us?
This is for volunteers. Yes, sir. Now, to answer that question, if you had paid firefighters, they could be included in the policy. We call it a career rider. So, but since you're 100% volunteer, this is for volunteers only in the county.
Thank you. Chief, you said there was some grant money that would apply towards part of this. For those of you out there, if you're curious, a total premium, annual premium to cover our volunteer departments.
The reason...
$8,858 in the higher coverage is $10,937. That's a premium that covers all the departments. You had mentioned something to me earlier about grant monies available.
The reason we're bringing this to the Commissioner's Court is if we can do the group policy that Marvin's talking about, we can save anywhere from 25% to 50% on individual policies if each department did it on their own. If we can do, use the Commissioner's Court and the Titus County to pay that premium upfront while we apply for the grants. The grants are based off $175 per firefighter on your active roles. So if you have 15, well, I'll just take 10. You have 10 firefighters, oh, my math is bad, times 175, that's what?
1750.
Most departments in Titus County have an average of 12 to 15. Telco has 23. I believe Trilax has 18. The low person in the pack is Sugar Hill. We only have five or six, five that we can count on. So if you take the five times the 175, you're down around $1,000. Our workman comp policy currently was billed at 1,018. We went back and got an adjustment on it, and I think it was rebuilt at 569. So that only allows us $400 to go toward that $1,200 policy for the accident and sickness. So if we go out and each department files their grants, we can pay back to the county almost 90, probably 95% of the total cost of the policy. We would probably need some help in the auditing of the, getting the grants filed, and the money is guaranteed as long as we get the grants in. So we can get the money back to you. It's just coming up with the $10,000 ourselves if we went with the $100,000 policy. So that's what we're looking for, is you folks to cover the main bill, and then, once we get our grants in, and we always file our grants, the receipts come back in January that we have paid it, and we usually have our money back from the Forest Service two to three weeks after that. So we can take the funding we get back from them, write it back to the county, and that's what we're looking for.
So instead of us paying $10,937 for an annual premium, we might have to front that, but then we could expect a high percentage of that?
A high percentage back.
When you get your grant.
Right now, the only one that we can't guarantee it back would be the Sugar Hill, and you might have to come up with an additional 1,000 to cover that on the overall policy.
Is that something that can be calculated with any accuracy, or do we just need, if we were to decide to do this, just need to trust that it would be a high percentage of this?
Well, the only difference in fluctuation on what could come back is should we lose or gain firefighters in each department? The more firefighters, the more we can apply for.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah. We were complaining about not being able to get volunteers and asking, does the county give up? More than, almost tripled what we used to pay the city to help us. So now the county is going to furnish the insurance? How about the city? If they furnish the insurance, why are we doing that? How do you control? How many? I've heard you complain about one or two firemen available, voluntary. That's all you had. So what happens if we've got 18 and they don't all show up? How would you ever control that? It might come to only a few fires a year. And we keep a log sheet, you keep a log sheet. I suppose you bill us for it.
See...
I don't know how you'd control it.
The money's paying back to you as the county is pretty much guaranteed. Getting firefighters, if I understand the question, to the scenes of each fire, that we can't guarantee because of their jobs, their families, their social activities. There's so many things now involved in taking a time away. I was just reading this morning that a fire department that was formed in 1832 in Virginia had to go out of business because the volunteers were no longer there. And it's a sad fact that we're facing is that we're losing volunteers, but it's our economy that has put us in that status.
Well, I think this would be a good time to look into a county fire department because of this. If what we pay them, I believe we could have a lot better. I realize that you and the judge say that it's cheaper to do this, but I'd like to see the numbers. Where we would have a county fire department?
Well, I'm sure those numbers are available and will be presented to you, but...
They say, I'd like to see them. Where would I see those numbers? It's not...
The other thing that, and I've talked to Marvin about this, is what this has done in Rust County is by presenting, and they have the policy down there for their firefighters, volunteers. And right off the bat, it did not produce more firefighters in their volunteers arena, but it did help retain the firefighters they had because now they were covered with insurance, and they knew that if they got hurt, it would be covered. So you can say that it may help in, we've tried everything else to get volunteers, and this may be something that, look, if you come be a volunteer, we can offer you insurance. So we're trying everything we can to try to get volunteers.
I think you should consider making a county fire department. If you put the numbers to what we pay in the city now to help us, it's ridiculous.
Well, again, you put the numbers to a county fire department too, and can you afford that?
Well, a lot of counties have.
Well, that'll be for a future discussion. Thank you for bringing this. I'm going to suggest, guys, you don't have monies budgeted for this right now. This is worthy of additional discussion. It seems to me like if you've got grant monies that can be paid back, it could be a lot of bang for our buck. Let's be sure, I'll stop there. I'll listen to anybody that wants to make a motion on this.
Well, I feel better about it, Jerry. We talked about it, and I heard the $10,000 figure. I thought, heartburn. I got heartburn real bad that day. But when I hear we can get a grant for it, that sounds good. So it sounds a lot better. I did check with Texas Association of Counties, where we have a lot of insurance with. They know of these policies, but they don't have anybody to carry a policy like this for our county fire departments. They're working on it. They may get some in the future, he said. So we will consider it, I guess, and we'll have to budget it, or we can start it in the right timing where y'all's grants go in to pay us back in January or February when that comes back. So that sounds a lot better.
Any motions, questions, table?
I'd like to just table it for now.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Fitch to table this item.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you both for the information here. Appreciate it. Item number five, this is an item I mentioned to you at the last meeting. The Senior Meal Center had a ice machine that died on them, and we got a couple of bids. This one was by far the better of the two bids. This is installed by a gentleman with ARS, a local restaurant repair operation, and he's familiar and does install these. And Hoshizaki is a good brand, I know from experience. And this is a relatively small machine, but adequate to keep up with their needs over there. $26, I think I mentioned to you at the last meeting, about $2,500. The actual price came in at $2,600 installed for this Hoshizaki, brand-new ice machine for the Senior Meal Center.
I make a motion, we go ahead and purchase that?
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, consider possibly approve the Lawrence subdivision and Platte, 15.88 acres. This is located at County Road 2360, County Road 2363, in Commissioner Fitch's precinct. Commissioner, what do we need to know? I've got submitted paperwork here.
Looked at the Platte. The Platte does not require any type of roads in this subdivision. Because all these lots go to, they come out on either 2360 or 2363, which is one of the best county roads in my precinct. Those are really nice-made, built roads. So he won't have any road problems to deal with. And I looked at the west divided, and Clint, we looked at the size of those lots, as far as they're going to deal with all the septic and all the issues. Several of those lots back up to the lake. So as far as I'm concerned, it looks really good on the up and up. That's a nice subdivision there. So I make a motion that we approve all the surveys and the report on the subdivision.
Motion made by Commissioner Fitch to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain from that vote. Item number seven, approve oral and written reports of county officials. And have you already handed those out to the commissioners? Okay, you've got your packet there that...
Can you make a comment on this?
Sure.
I see this month, all the claims we had on insurance was $845.37, so just thought that's not very much, so.
Hope that...
That's a good thing.
...that rate with the run out of that old insurance.
Make a motion, we approve the report?
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, our treasurer's report. Cheryl?
Make a motion, we approve?
Motion for approval of the treasurer's report comes from Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can fans for their signature please? Item number 10, signed pay orders, approved payment of the bills.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
Ma'am? Approved budget amendments. Thank you for keeping me straight. I knew that. No budget amendments on item number nine for this week. Number 10, signed pay orders, approved bill payment.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 11 will be a little bit lengthier. I'm going to give you all a five-minute break. Anybody that's here that wants to go on, encourage anybody that wants to stay to stay. We're going to bump our closing comments now, right now, so that we can go into that presentation by Mr. Hollingsworth, and then we will not adjourn until that is finished. So closing comments, just wanted to let you all know, for those of you that didn't know, son of former Commissioner Thomas Hockaday, Rance Hockaday, was in a pretty serious accident on Friday evening around dinnertime, 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock, something like that. He is going to be okay, but he was in a bad accident, ran into the back of a dump truck, stalled, parked, I don't know what the details were, on Highway 67, coming into town around the Cookeville area. And he hit that stopped dump truck in his car, and punctured lung, seven broken ribs, lacerations, lots of pain, but he is, no major head injury doesn't appear, and it looks like he will heal eventually. Rance is big and strong and young, and that's good, but he's in a heap of pain at this time. So please remember the Hockaday family. Other comments? Can't think of any right now. I will start down here on my right. Commissioner Riddle, any closing comments at this time?
No.
Commissioner Fitch?
I'd just like to say that I am against the building of the Marvin Nichols Reservoir, and I want to fight for Titus County what's right for Titus County. And I do attend those SRBA meetings. And I do attend those SRBA meetings, and some of you have been there, and I noticed some of the board members. So we'll keep working for the best interest of Titus County people. This is, y'all are a lot of my friends and neighbors. I'm a Towco guy between the rivers over there, so I was raised up over there, and many of y'all know that already. So I just wanted to make that statement, and maybe I won't have to answer my phone as much this week. Pass it along.
Not that you mind. Oh, no, it's right here, ready to go. I'm ready.
I do appreciate everyone that's concerned over this issue, and it's a bad issue, and I hope we make it through it. And I'm here to help, be here for everybody that, you know, because I'll be affected, you'll be affected, and it's not a very good sight, and I am going to be against it. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the phone calls and all that I've got. Anytime that I do get phone calls and all like that, it makes my job easier to make my decision and all. I appreciate each and every one of you that are here today, and ask you that, just to continue to keep us informed of y'all's things that y'all want or need us to do. So, and I'm going to say, I'm against it also. So that's all I've got.
All right. You're welcome to sit here. Anybody that wants to go, this is your opportunity. Take a three-minute break and be right back in here. Mr. Hollingsworth, you'll be on the hot seat, okay?
Okay, let's calm down the volume, and just as we were extremely respectful to everyone that spoke earlier, and you had ample opportunity to say whatever you wanted to say, this meeting was requested by Mr. Hollingsworth, and we are here as a commissioners' court to listen to him today. This is not an action item, and so therefore, let's give him our respect and attention. And Kirby?
Thank you, Judge.
10 o'clock, I'm watching that clock. I know you'll be respectful of that.
Okay, well, let me help do that. I'm prepared. I wore a bulletproof vest today. I'm ready. I'm not a newcomer to Titus County. My uncle on my father's side was a bailiff of Titus County Court for some decades. My sister works here, vice president with a local bank. I've been a business owner here. So I care about Titus County. I live in Franklin County. I care about it, too. I am appointed by, I'm a volunteer. I don't make any money. I'm a volunteer appointed by Governor Greg Abbott, approved by our local state senator, Brian Hughes, to serve as a representative on the Sulphur River. So that is a state authority with a non-taxing authority, okay? So we don't have the ability to tax to be able to meet our bills. The Sulphur River Basin, what is that? Well, a basin is a bowl. It means that some of the raindrops from your backyard and my backyard collectively hit a stream, hit a creek, and they end up in the Red River, in the Sulphur River. The Sulphur River begins where? Fannin County. That's the North Sulphur. The South Sulphur begins where?
Hunt County.
They come together at Cooper Lake, and they continue all the way across 11 counties. So it's interesting to govern a, some entity with those varieties of interests, okay? Because what Hunt County thinks about this river is completely different than what Mount Vernon thinks about this, or what Texarkana thinks about it. The prime concern of Sulphur Springs is what? That's where they get their water. They get their water out of Cooper Lake. Now, Cooper Lake might not be everything that everybody wants, but it's pretty vital to Sulphur Springs, because that's where they get their drinking water. They would not be having the explosive environment they have right now if it were not for Cooper Lake. Cooper Lake don't have a lot of problems right now, but who knows what problems may come up in the future? And the Sulphur River Basin is representative, has representatives from, throughout the basin, so that there can be different viewpoints, from Bowie County, from Lamar County, from Franklin or Titus County, from my friend from Red River County, okay? They're all personal, you know? Politics is local. And more than that, what we know about water is, they say in Texas, whiskey is for drinking, water is for fighting. So it's a personal, it's a personal thing. I understand that. But the Sulphur River Basin, I think that our area is better off with it than without it. Over the course of, Marvin Nichols has been a suggested water project for a long time. Maybe, Gary, maybe you know that, since the '60s.
56.
56. So it goes way back. Marvin Nichols was an engineer who charted prospective water projects throughout the state, not just on this river. He was also a great conservationist. He worked with the Sierra Club, and he worked against several proposed lakes, and he helped stop several lakes, because his opinion was there are certain places where, once you make a lake, it's something you can't undo. It covers up a lot of territory, and it's just something you can't turn around. So he was one of the foremost engineers in the history of the state. The Sulphur River Basin Authority is charged with oversight of either conservation and/or development on this river. So Sulphur River Basin does not have an agenda to be for a certain project. Over the course of the last months, I've been back on the board for a couple of months, but I think you could probably look at the minutes of the Sulphur River Basin Authority, read the minutes, and you will see no conversation about being proactive for any project. What I wanted to talk to you today about is what is reality and what is fact. Over the last several years, the Sulphur River Basin Authority has been engaged to oversee many, many studies having to do with our river. The Metroplex is very interested in getting water out of our river, and they've done a lot of studies. They've done studies to prove that the water is available. On average year, there's some 2 million acre-feet of water that goes through our river that ends up in the Mississippi. Now, if you say that real fast, you don't know what that means, but just imagine in your mind, 2 million acres, 1 feet deep in water, that's a lot, a lot of water. So there's, what they're proving is this, the water that we would want out of that river will in no ways affect the availability of water for this region in the future. That's what they're attempting to prove. As a matter of fact, it's said that this river has more available water for permit than any river in the state of Texas. Now, that's not to say that it has more water than other rivers. It's to say that it has more water available for permit. There's a difference. When they do their studies about water availability, they do, there's all kinds of impacts. What kind of trees are there? How shallow is the river? How deep is the river? How many water rights downstream are grandfathered already? What kind of industry is currently there, and what kind of industry might possibly be there? The greatest population of northeast Texas that we have to consider is Bowie County, because that's where the humans are, and they depend on water out of Wright-Pattman. So what's happening recently is this, you've all heard about the Region C and Region D Every five years, the regional water planning districts have to go to square one, and they have to plan a charter course of how they will supply their citizens enough water for the next 50 years. Why? Because water takes a long time. Takes a long time to create a lake. Well, five years ago, over the last several planning sessions, Region C and Region D have been at odds. Region D is our area, which is 19 counties. Region C is 15 counties, I think. Here's the difference. 19 counties where we live is somewhere around 830,000 people. We have lots of water and fewer people. Just fact. Region C in 15 counties is currently 7.5 million people. That's over 25% of the state of Texas. So here's the question. It's, people question, do they truly need water? Do they truly need water? I'm going to say they do. You know, you may disagree. Here's, I lean on facts. The growth of, the growth of the Region C has been astronomical. The growth of our area has not been nearly at the numbers of theirs. 7.6 million people, charted to be 14.7 million over the next 50 years. That's what they have to, that's what they have to plan on. Now, when people say, well, there's a lot of alternatives, that's true. There's a lot of alternatives. So here's their plan for the next 50 years. One is to create Bodark Lake, okay? That's in Region C, but it's barely in Region C. And then another one, now, by the way, Bodark Lake is 117,000 acre-feet. Lake Palestine, another 101,000 out of Lake Palestine. Ralph Hall, Ralph Hall is very interesting, because it's on our river, it's on the same river we're talking about. So if you want to know a lot about what might happen to our future, it would make sense that we might want to pay attention to what's happening with Ralph Hall Lake. Why? It's on the same river, same species, same species that will be dealt with in our area. So what does the mitigation look like there? What does the land grab look like there? Is that lake being made in such a way that local people will participate in the water use? Is that, is that lake being made in such a way that there will be economic development? If you have liability, if you have a sacrifice, the only justification is that maybe there will be some benefit. So in addition to that, Lake Towacanah, that's a different than Towacanee. Additional Texoma blending, that's another 120,000 acre-feet. Out of Sulphur Basin, no matter what project it is, whether it's Park House Lake, whether it's Marvin Nichols, whether it's Wright-Pattman, they're hoping to produce 483,000 acre-feet. Actually, 483,400 acre-feet. Now, I told you earlier, on an average year, there's 2 million acre-feet of water that is expended in the Red River. They're not asking for 2 million. They're asking for 483,000. Okay, on the Neches Run of River, 47,000. On Lake Columbia, 56,000. From Oklahoma, 50,000. From Toledo Bend, 200,000. These are not, which ones of these are the simplest? None of them. Every one of these projects will have runes just like this, where people are upset if you do it, upset if you don't do that. There are human beings involved in every one of these. What is the total of all of their projects that they're hoping for? 1 and 1/4 million acre-feet, okay? So you say, well, they don't really need us. Well, that's, out of our river is composed about 38 and 1/2% of that. My point is this, it's going to be very difficult for them to meet 50 years planning and leave our river out of it, okay? Now, I want to, Gray, you made a good point about how much water is in a lake, but I'm going to tell you this. When planning how much water you can get out of a river or out of a lake, they do not go by the simple math that you gave about the area plus how much it will compound. What they're going to do is, they calculate what is the yield of the lake, how much you can get out of that lake without harming the downstream environment. And I know that, for example, Marvin Nichols is 66,000 acre footprint. It owns like 1 and 1/2 million acre-feet of water, but the yield on it is less than a third of that. So you cannot calculate how much water is released from a lake. You cannot calculate, they go in specifically, and it's very complicated. I can't tell you all the science involved as determining what the yield of a specific lake is, but it's very unique. It changes from lake to lake, how much water availability is on a river or any particular So over the course of the years, Region C has been looking at water available on this river. Now, the city started out with lakes in its region. That makes sense. Titus County would not first start out with a lake in someone else's county. They depend on a, on a lake in their own county. That's the way most of the Metroplex started out, with nearby lakes, lakes that are uphill, that can gravity flow into their rivers that are running right beside their cities. But as population has grown, they have reached out. There are three current lakes that they have paid for and are shipping water to their area that are in our region. One's Cooper, one's Lake Fork, and what's up? There's, anyway, there's three in our region that supplies. Now, a lot of folks keep pointing at Cooper Lake. The last eight lakes that have been created, only one of them has been a core lake. So people keep comparing any new lake to core lake, which is Cooper Lake. But there are no prospective lakes on our rivers that would be core lakes. There are none. There's a suggested Park House 1, Park House 2, Marvin Nichols in two or three different stages. All of them would be lakes that have a sponsor from the Metroplex. They're not federal lakes, okay? They're not, they would be intended, hopefully, with local participation, and that local participation would want to have benefits from the lake. So all of the studies that they have done over the decades, they didn't do those studies by themselves. They did those studies with local oversight from the Sulphur River Basin Authority. Well, you can say, well, that group is just for Marvin Nichols. Well, I think you heard from one person who's not for Marvin Nichols. Our Sulphur River Basin Authority is a group of people that changes, just like the people in these seats. You know, they have different opinions. There'll be somebody from Bowie County, there'll be people with timber background, there'll be people with all kinds of influence. be people with all kinds of influences. So, the board, over the years, may be more pro Marvin Nichols, and then the next board will come up and it'll be less for Marvin Nichols. That's not our charge, and that's not our duty. Our duty is to follow the laws of the state of Texas and try to see that studies are done lawfully. And, by the way, the major reason I'm here is this, over the couple, last couple of decades, we've basically been very involved in overseeing the studies of this river. But these studies have been bought and paid for by Metroplex entities. So, there's a growing amount of people that say, that doesn't look too good. We just went through a, in recent history, we went through a sunset review. And the sunset review's opinion was this, it would be better if this entity, the Sulfur River, would engage more local entities to be part of everything that you do. I agree. What we stand for should be influenced by Titus County, Franklin County, Hopkins County, water utility groups, different entities in this area. That's what I'm suggesting is the wise thing to do. I'm not suggesting anybody be for any project. What I'm suggesting is that Titus County have a voice going forward. Now, one thing that's undeniable is that these seats are full. And so, if there was an application for a permit next year, and there's nothing saying that there couldn't be an application for a lake on that river next year. If there were, would we have a voice? I have news for you. Nobody's gonna ask for, you do, you do not get a vote for Marvin Nichols. I'm not asking you for the vote, and the state of Texas is not gonna ask you to vote. We don't get a vote on that. The rules that, the rules for Marvin Nichols are already laid down in the laws of the state of Texas. I'll remind you of one lake that you're very aware of, and that's Bob Sandlin. Bob Sandlin has landowners in Titus County, Cam County, and a few in Franklin County, but the board consists of who?
Titus.
Titus County. So if the permit fees, or the boat dock fees, or somebody's being unfair to Camp County residents, they could say, how come we have no say in this? Now, I think that the Titus County Board should be fair at all times, I'm sure they try to do that. I think that SRBA would try to be fair as we go forward. But you may or may not have a representative on the SRBA. Recently, there was a Mount Pleasant representative on the SRBA, it was Katie Stedman. But, when, when her, when her term was up, it was replaced by somebody from Mount Vernon. So you may or may not have a Titus County representative on the board. But I suggest you just think about what your role might be with the Sulfur River going, Sulfur River Basin going forward, so that, and, and us be proactive. It's, it's, things like this, I don't think work well when we looked at them in retrospect. I think today, if you were to take a vote in Camp County, whether they would like to have representation for Bob Sandlin, the vote would be 100% yes. Okay? What would Marvin Nichols look like? Well, to some people, it might be good, to a lot of people, it might be bad. But I, I think, you know, if I had anything to say about it, I would put every protection I could in place for landowners. I would try to put things in place where there were appraisal review boards, made up by people that we know, who will be fair to people in our county. I think that if there would be a lake on this river, where 85% of the lake were in Red River County, that it would be a tragedy if in that permit, it didn't include a water intake structure, where water could be provided to places like Clarksville, who's having a very, very hard time with water, that they, they don't have enough water to solicit industry. Clarksville was one of the beginning cities of our area, if you want to talk about legacy, legacy and heritage, it started with Clarksville. It started with Red River County. Red River County split then into Titus County, and Titus County split into Franklin County. So, I just believe that we're gonna have a better voice and a better, better outcome with everyone's participation. And I would like to see Sulfur River Basin, going forward, to be in a position that has a broader scope and has affiliations with entities like Titus County, so we can, if such a project ever comes along, we'll be in a better position to fight for the county citizens. And I thank you for your time.
Well, before you sit down, I mean, suggest, what does that look like, better representation?
Well, this is a new day, so it's not a completely clear path, but we would, we, like I say, we're a non-taxing entity. We have very few bills, but we still have bills. And we don't want to depend on the Metroplex to have, for our support. We would like to have some support from local counties, water utility groups, anybody that would be a stakeholder in any future project on this river. So we are, in answer to the request by the state Sunset Commission, we're at least making a request, offering ourselves to all of the counties that are in this basin, that I think we all have some role to play in it, but more especially, Red River County, and Titus County, and Frank County. And there would even be a little sliver of, if, if Marvin Nichols ever happens, as it's currently drawn up, there's a little sliver of that footprint in Morris County. So, you know, at, different people have roles to play. Different people put different offering amounts in the, in the plate, but anything is, would be respected. We suggested to Franklin County that they might consider $8,000 annually. Our board runs a pretty lean and mean tight ship, but we have an annual budget of about $300,000 a year. We have an office, we have a office manager. I didn't introduce our executive director, who is Meg Shelton. And it's a big, it's a big area, okay? And there are a lot of laws. We have gone to Washington DC to fight against Waters for America. I don't know how many are, are aware of that, that the president recently addressed, which was an overreach of federal, of federal groups into state waters. We have, we travel back and forth from time to time to Austin. I know that Meg does some traveling to have conversations with other river authorities. We attend all of the regional meetings that we can, with Region D, conflict meetings, things like that. But, I'll tell you, where, who deciphers the difference between fact and fiction? Because, when you have a public meeting and people get up and speak, they, they're liable to say anything. You will hear that Marvin Nichols would be a core lake. Is it a core lake or not? Well, that's not an opinion, that's a fact. It's not a core lake. Okay? Would there be economic development available on the lake? That's not subject for, I mean, that, the, the Marvin Nichols project, as it is stated currently, would allow for economic development. Just like the current lake that's being put in at the, in Fannin County. The Metroplex wants Ralph Hall Lake, the local sponsor is Fannin County. They are building a water structure on that lake, so that not only do they have water rights, but they are paying the kind of infrastructure cost so that they can get the water. By the way, there's, here's what I, here's what I would say about mitigation. Gary told you that, there's different entities that have said things about mitigation. I would say that most of the people who have spoken up about mitigation are partisan people. Forestry Service has never been for a lake. I mean, they're for timber. Fish and Wildlife, different ones have said, I think the figures that Gary quoted was a minimum of 120, 130,000, a maximum of 600,000. We've heard numbers like 900,000. Well, of course, you would be up in arms if someone said that the mitigation of a lake was gonna be 600,000 acres, 900,000 acres. You would have to take away every home in northeast Texas. Is there any basis in reality? No. Honestly, no basis in reality. Mitigation laws have changed. There are people still today that are comparing mitigation laws to lakes that were made 50 years ago. When you used to make mitigation, there were multiple factors. The lake is this big, we'll multiply that by 8, that's what the mitigation will be. They don't do it like that anymore. Since 2008, they've not done it like that anymore. We heard from a mitigation specialist in Sulfur Springs, and he was trying to explain it, but the processes are kind of complicated. But here's, here's, in a nutshell, this is the only way I can explain it. You look at, you take the entire footprint of the lake, and they section it up, how much of it is timber? How much of it is bottomland hardwood? How much of it is water? Well, I have a question for you. How much do you have to mitigate the water surface? Do they know?
For this lake?
For, no. Any, any water, any lake project, there's no mitigation for the water surface. Why? Because there's no, you know, you would mitigate the aquatic species, there's no non-aquatic species to mitigate. You have to mitigate, so my point is, that you can't just look at that surface as a whole. It's not 66,000 acres timed this much. Okay? That's my point. So they, they section it off, there's some things that have to be protected more than other things.
Could I add something? No, sir. You'll have all the questions, time you need.
I'll stay after and talk with anybody that wants to. If I don't have the information, I'll try my best to get it for you, but, but I'll say this. I ask the people not to listen to me, but do some investigation. Take a look closely, I don't know everything about the Ralph Hall Lake, I don't know everything about the Bodark Lake, but I think there's a lot that could be gained from looking at what's, what's happening there. Why? Because they're not made 50 years ago, they're made right now. And one of them's made on our local river, with the same species of plants and animals that we have. So what are they doing there? I would say this, I would say, in, in, in recent, Senator Eltai made an amendment that put some stricter charges to those making lakes, that they have to make greater efforts to protect landowners. Well, I think you can see that in Ralph Hall Lake, because they are re, doing a lot of re-channeling. There's mitigations on one end of the lake, there's mitigation on the other end of the lake, but there's economic development all the way around it. On one end of the lake, they are totally re-channeling the river, so that it does this. Okay? Why? Because the greatest ecological concern on this river is erosion and siltation. Okay? And years ago, they came into our river and they totally re-channeled it, they, they, tried to increase the water flow. Well, it did some damage. We did siltation studies a few years back, and you can argue exactly about how precise they are, but the amount of siltation that goes into Wright-Pattman is somewhere around 1 million gallons of dirt a day. Okay? That's, that's a big threat to the largest population in northeast Texas. So when we start looking at mitigation, we're thinking about things like that, Judge.
All right. Thank you very much. Here's what we're gonna do, we've got just a few minutes. Commissioners, this is your time, if you have any questions for Kirby, after that, we're going to adjourn. You'll have an opportunity to visit with these folks. I have a hearing in this courtroom at 10 till 11, so I'll ask for it to be empty by 10 till 11. You're welcome to gather anywhere else you can find room. Commissioners, any questions here? Thank you for your presentation. Thanks, everybody, for being respectful of him and keeping it quiet. Commissioners?
All right.
Thank you, Kirby. You're welcome back anytime if you have other information to disseminate. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite and seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Parker. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, have a good day, everyone.